Today is Wednesday, November the 18th, 2015. And we start a little later because we had another meeting before. It's almost eight o'clock. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, and please rise. And let's bow our head this evening and pray. Loving God, welcome into your arms the victims of violence and terrorism. Comfort their families and all who grieve for them. Help us conquer our fears and uncertainty in today's world. And bless us with the knowledge that we are secure in your love. Strengthen all those who labor for peace. May peace reign in our hearts and in our lives. We pray for the people of France and all of our military, law enforcement, and firefighter personnel, especially in light of the recent and brutal acts of terrorism. We pray for those that are ill and frail in our community, and we pray for a blessed Thanksgiving, and we pray to you, Lord. And please, Mr. Mayor, if we could have a moment of silence for all the victims in France as a result of the terrorism and their families.
Chief, for the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you call Gables' ordinance? Can you say, "The chief has made some research and you've based yours on the ones..."
Can you wait till citizen presentation, please?
Mr. Mayor, while the clerk delivers the memo, are you done, Anetti? We can do the roll call.
Okay, please.
Mayor Eduardo Moina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Emblanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy DaBlanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano El Suarez.
Yes.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Are we ready for the next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for November 4th, 2015, regular city commission meeting.
Okay. Any comments on the minutes? I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'll be brief. My report for this meeting includes the following items, and you have a written report before you. The State of Florida Department of Revenue, known as the TRIM Division, which is Truth and Milage, has certified that the City of West Miami is in compliance with all of the budgetary requirements, and you all were provided with a copy of that letter earlier this month. So we have concluded the budget process with no significant, with no findings from the state, and the original TRIM notice is kept on file. The next item in my report is the 2015 Lighting of the Tree Ceremony. As of the writing of the memo this afternoon, the total contributions pledged and/or received for the event totals $4,450. We are currently seeking estimates from party vendors for the rides, the popcorn machine, cotton candy, trackless train, and we have a budget cap for those activities for $1,650. The chaplain has been confirmed so that he can deliver the invocation. Arnold Perry has accepted the chief's invitation. The program has been pretty much set based on what we've done in prior years. I've attached a copy of a sample flyer that my assistant and our IT gentleman has put together, and the sponsors are all in the back. The program will start at 5:30 p.m., and if you are okay with this flyer, we can go ahead and send it off to the printers.
I don't have it. I don't have it. I don't have it.
I specifically asked Carrie to give the clerk a copy. I am so sorry.
No, sir.
No, sir. Let me pass the flyer around to you so you could look at it. That was done very late in the day today, but we actually had copies. We will place additional copies in your box. I'm sure they were left downstairs. But that's pretty much the flyer, and it's in keeping with what we've done in prior years. Front and back, colored copies, and they will be distributed to every household in the City of West Miami, placed on the city's website and on our Facebook page.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Somebody check the spelling.
We'll leave that up to Commissioner Blanca. She's awesome at that. An English major, so couldn't ask for anything better. While you browse through the flyer, I am going, I've made arrangements to be away from the office three days next week, is a short week. I'll be away from the office Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. My mother is having some medical tests performed, and so I need to be by her side. That said, as customary, I will leave Mercedes Leon as acting city manager, and I will be available via cellphone, and I'll be in contact with the office daily. The next item, we have calendared the mayor and city commissioners with some important upcoming holiday events and dates, and we will send reminders in the coming days. As you know, one of them is tomorrow is the senior center Thanksgiving holiday, so you are reminded to be here close to noon so that you can wish them a happy Thanksgiving. As customary, the next item also talks about the holidays. The city will observe Thanksgiving and the day after. City Hall will be closed. There will be garbage and trash collection, as customary, and we've asked our IT department to assist us with preparing a Thanksgiving holiday message from the mayor and city commissioners, and that will be posted on our website and Facebook page accordingly. Attached to my report, and I'm sorry I didn't make it up here, there is a budget containing the revenues and the projected expenses for the lighting of the tree ceremony, and it looks like we're probably $200 short of our expected goal here so that we can meet the budget. As of today, we had $4,450 in either pledged commitments or actual receipts that we've written up from our corporate partners. As of this afternoon, we're looking to spend $4,615 with providing the festivities for the lighting of the trees, so it looks like we're $215, give or take, short at this juncture. So we hope that other partners will come through. We're going to wait till Friday to send these flyers out to the printing shop, and I hope that we get another sponsorship between now and then. That concludes my report, and if you like the flyer or the concept of it, we will continue to prepare for the flyers to be hand-delivered to the community.
All in favor of the flyers, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Manager, how short are we, two-something, you said?
About $215 or so.
$215, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for the city manager? Next item.
Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney. Thank you. Next item.
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, under committee reports, report of the mayor.
No report. Don't forget the lighting of the tree ceremony, that's the only thing I...
December 9th at 5:30 p.m.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Next item.
Item nine, citizen presentations.
Okay. Anybody for citizen presentation? Okay, please come forward.
I believe we had a visitor's room.
Well, let me say something.
Please, Mr. Mayor, take her first.
Okay, if anybody's registered, let me explain what citizen presentation is. Citizen presentation, you know, due to, we have more than normal the number of people here, please limit it to two minutes, and this is for items that are not contemplated on the agenda. If the item is contemplated on the agenda, and we have a public hearing that is being announced, you speak at the time. If this is not related to any of that, then this is a time to please come in.
Mr. Mayors, it would be a good opportunity to remind the public that there are speaker cards at the counter. They should be filled out and given to the clerk if anyone is going to speak on the items.
Okay, please do.
Elliot Hasbell, 15345 Southwest 77th Court, Palmieri Bay, Florida, 33157. I want to, and I'll explain, introduce Maria Murray, who happens to be the managing officer, general manager of all of the family's properties with the family for an excess of 40 years. I'm doing this because I have to say something afterwards, but let me introduce her and let her get her name and address on the record. Mr. Mayor, with your pleasure.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Murray. My address is 1801 Ferdinand Street, Coral Gables.
Thank you.
Welcome, Maria.
Welcome to the city.
I wanted you to meet her based on what I said earlier in context, and I'm not rehearsing it. Obviously, I am frustrated, and there is a disagreement between me and family members. There's another thing that just happened on Tuesday, which hopefully will get resolved between me and Mr. Mark Levin sometime next week. It's going to go one way or it's going to go another way. In any event, in the future, I will no longer, although I do have technical legal ownership, I will no, in all the businesses, I do, will no longer, I will continue to come, but that's for the City of West Miami. I will no longer come and be a spokesman as relates to any issue as relates to Sunnyside Motel and Trailer Park or West Haven Motel and Trailer Park this commission will have, if it needs, the benefit of Maria Murray or the president of the corporation with Mr. Mark Levin. Without belaboring the point, I intend to cut ties, let my wife, their sister, deal with them, deal with me. Yes, it'll be more time, back and forth, and so on and so forth, but I am extricating myself formally from any legal or moral responsibility to have to deal with them directly. And certainly what I heard tonight, I have an obligation to pass on. Maria was here because I believed that this was going to be part of the agenda after the workshop, and she was going to report back to Mr. Mark Levin. His statement is four ears are better than two. The reality is he prefer not to talk to me, and now I prefer not to talk to him. Civilly, yes, business, no bar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for citizen presentation?
Mr. DeFuria, Joe DeFuria, would you address the commission on the citizen presentation or on any other specific item of the agenda?
That's part of the agenda.
That's item 11A. Yes, that's a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, next item.
Mr. Mayor, we have somebody.
A member of the public. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brittany Fredbeade.
Will you bring it down? You can bring it down. To you.
My name is Brittany Fredbeade. My address is 3025 Southwest 103rd Place.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I think we need a clearer record. If you could move it closer to your mouth.
3025 Southwest 103rd Place. I'm a Miami Dade student, and I'm just here to ask a question for my speech project. Where do you get your funds to, for example, create a new parking lot?
Good question. Madam Manager.
That can either come from budgeting, general revenue dollars, or other enterprise funds that would have a direct association with an infrastructure improvement, or it could come from development impact fees that are generally used to address capital improvement projects such as parking facilities for government space for the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Is it? Okay.
Good luck with your project.
Welcome to the city anytime.
Now, are we sure you got a good picture of her because you were standing way over there? Did you get a good picture? Because otherwise you can come back to the podium for a picture.
You're fine? Okay.
You're good?
Anybody else for citizen presentation? Okay, next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, this is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to designate those residential areas within the City of West Miami as residential parking only, establishing that the designated areas shall be any area of one block from any commercial area or establishment within the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to place signage of residential parking only on such designated areas, creating a residential parking zone, creating a residential and visitor permit, decal, hang, tag parking program, establishing the enforcement of residential parking only program, including the issuance of citations for noncompliance, authorizing City of West Miami police officers to issue such citations for noncompliance of the residential parking only signage, establishing fines for violation of this ordinance, provide for codification, provide for severability, and provide for an effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. What I would like to do is the following, just to establish the rule of the game. First, I would like to hear from staff, city attorney, chief of police, et cetera, and then once we do that, I would like to open the public hearing to hear from the public, and then come back to the table for any comments or any recommendations or final vote. Mr. Penna.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
This is set up in order to assist the residential areas that we have within the city that are abutting or in the vicinity of commercial businesses. As you know, most of businesses along 67th Avenue, 57th Avenue, and A Street have very limited parking, and unfortunately, when you have a thriving commercial area, the residential area tends to suffer a bit from lack of parking, so the actual patrons that come to these businesses, they start bleeding into the residential area and start parking in front of the homes as early as 6:00 a.m. in the morning because there's limited parking where they're going either to work or where they're going to do business with. So most of the cities in the area, City of Coral Gables, City of Miami, have gone to these residential parking programs, which establishes the areas within the vicinity of the commercial areas as residential parking zones, so it keeps only residents in the area, parking in that area, and not patrons that are either working in the area or visiting those establishments, parking in the residential areas. The area, as written in the ordinance here, it was an oversight, but it only says one block. It should actually be three blocks from any commercial area because that would deter the actual violator from using that area for his type of parking. What we, all the cities have done is, first, we set up signs to advise those people in those areas that only residential vehicles are allowed to park in the right of ways, and at the same time, we issue all the residents that live in the area tags so that the police could differentiate from which cars do belong and which cars don't belong. That's technically the crux of the ordinance. Any questions you may have, we could answer, and it's working so far for other cities, so we seem to have that problem. We had it at 57th Avenue with this, a business was very successful. Fortunately, they moved away, but now we have it on the other side of the city on 67th Avenue, so we might as well pass it and incorporate it into our parking section of the code, and that way, everybody's protected.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to, Mr. Penna, and obviously, this comes to you because we have a number of concerned citizens, and some of them are sitting in the audience this evening. The city has changed. We have not grown in land area, but we've grown even within the residential homes, and I've lived in this city for a very long time, and back in the day, families had one vehicle. Now you have families where, you know, that live in residential properties, and they have four or five vehicles. Even some people like to collect antique cars, and so, you know, you have a different set of circumstances because the demands and the needs are different today. Families are growing, and some extended family members are sort of pulling together and living together. That added to the commercial parking burden brings a unique, and I want to say, a disturbing for some people, situation where the front of their property, although labeled a public right of way, is being used by people who don't even reside in the city and come, and they tear up the parkway and they inconvenience the residents because they cannot have their family members park their own vehicles in front of their house. So we've had this situation, and I think we've had conversations up here and individually regarding what, you know, what developments have occurred over the years because of business growth, as Mr. Penna has explained, and because of other parking situations that have been generated. That said, I've asked the chief to do a little bit of homework and find out what other communities are doing so that we can give you some options to entertain, to see which way is the most feasible way, something that would work in the city, that would satisfy, obviously, the issue of the parking concern that will be addressed here this evening. We've asked the chief, and so I would encourage you to listen to what he has to say and what other cities have done to mitigate that problem.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. The city manager instructed me to do a little research on what other cities have done and how they solved or attempted to solve the situation. And what I've found is that the model which Coral Gables has done is, in my opinion, the one that we should adopt. It does, the residents that live in a block, let's take, for example, 21st Street from 67 to 66, you go to those residents that are on both sides of the street, and you say, "Do you want this parking program implemented on your block?" And if 50-plus-one percent say, "Yes, we do," then the signs are put up, they're given the placards, they're given the visitor passes, it's all done for a nominal fee, and the police department will be authorized by ordinance as prepared, will be prepared to cite those violators who park in that area and don't have the residential parking permit or the visitors' parking permits that are issued. Because, again, it allows the residents that live in that area to make that determination amongst themselves. If the neighbors want it because there is a problem, then they vote for it, and it gets done. And I think that is, Miami Beach has a very similar ordinance, but Coral Gables, and they have like a two-page pamphlet that I think you have, that it says exactly what has to be done and how it can be done, and I think that is the best route to take.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much. Any, anything else from staff?
Not from staff.
Mr. Penna.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the ordinance, the Coral Gables ordinance have been, the City of West Miami ordinance have been...
Modeled.
Drafted, modeling Coral Gables.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Penna.
And I hate to be the guy that comes and messes up the party. Because of personal experience here in the past, anytime you leave anything up to 50% plus one, there's going to be trouble on that block. I like uniformity. If we have it anywhere, we have it around the whole perimeter. That way, no one can say, "You didn't give me the right to vote for it in or out." We regulate what happens, and if we're going to regulate it on one block, we should regulate it on the perimeter, because if the opposite block doesn't want it, then you have the same problem right across the street. You're not helping anything.
Sure.
The residents in Coral Gables is completely different than our residents. We have a lot of, that area not only has residential homes, it also has multifamily homes where people are not vested in there as much as a person that actually owns a property and lives there. So I would tell you that because of our zoning, I would, you do uniformity around the whole perimeter of the city and get the voting out of the way. We had that same trouble with traffic commerce, and that took a while to get over that hump.
And for clarification, and this is something that we have to discuss with the attorney in the event passes. You're suggesting three blocks or one block?
Three blocks in from the commercial area.
Okay. And we get back to the question of that, because, Mr. Attorney, if this was advertised as one block, and this is, from what I understand, this, you know, it's a public hearing, and it was advertised as one block. Mr. Penna is suggesting three blocks.
From what I understand, we're allowed to do...
So...
Well, this is a public hearing.
Exactly.
This is the second hearing, so you can amend the heading if you want to.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we are legally correct or covered.
And again, if the majority of the public that's here is in favor of the 50%, I'll go with it, but I'm telling you, from past experience, it becomes a problem.
Okay.
Can you just be clear? You want, you're saying you want to, if this is implemented, to not just do the designated area, but do the entire business corridor?
That's right. Three blocks in from the entire business corridor and get the 50% requirement out. Delete it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with Mr. Penna. I think that's what we need to do. We need to institute it.
I...
I think that if we leave it up to voting, we're going to have a lot of issues.
Why don't we open the public hearing here for the public and then...
And for the record, I want to congratulate the administration for considering this proposal. It was proposed back a few months ago, and it was kind of went underground, so I'm glad that it was brought back up again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, please, you know, keep it to a couple of minutes. Don't, you know, don't repeat yourself, but we really want to hear from you. And unfortunately, I don't think we have enough people here, so, you know, right now, I'm, you know, I'm caught between rock and hard place. So anyway, this time, we open the public hearing.
Susanna Palomino. Susanna Palomino, my address is 6471 Southwest 22nd Street. And one of the concerns I had, it was already discussed here, is that I live, instead of one block away, I live in the second block away from that commercial area, so my concern was what's going to happen in the next block, because we're getting people parked on our block. I guess that is going to be resolved. The second question I have is funding for this. I asked Anetti... Um, I asked Nettie to provide me with a copy of a draft ordinance she did today and it is not clear, um, what's a nominal fee that Mr. Penna was referring to. Um, who's going to pay for that?
That the chief was referring to, you mean? He, he mentioned nominal fees.
When we speak about nominal fees, it's whatever's required for the signage and for the decals, whatever it costs to do that and the actual, uh, posting of the post.
Any, any, any idea on monies, uh...
We could bring that back at a later date. I mean, once the ordinance is passed, then we will figure it out and before implementing it, we'll bring it back and you, you decide on what you want for the residents to pay or what you...
As little as possible. Okay? So...
The signage is, is, if I may, um, the signage is not cheap, especially if you want a residentially aesthetic sign, and I know how this commission is all about quality of life. Um, and so I can tell you that signage is expensive, especially if you want to do it along the entire perimeter abutting the commercial area.
I had proposed using the same ones that Coral Gables uses.
Correct.
Which I, which I send you pictures of.
Yes, sir.
They're all over their, uh, residential area and, you know...
Yes, sir.
They look aesthetically very, very nice.
They look very nice, but that does, that comes at a price.
Well...
They're charged $20 per year.
Let me throw it for a second. I, why don't we listen, why don't we listen to the public first? Let's take questions and, and then before I close the public hearing, you know, answer the questions and if we still haven't answered the question, you have, give you another opportunity to, to talk or rebuttal or, or so. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I should say that, uh, anything that we passed, that you all passed, that's subject to a challenge because what we're limiting at this point is a public right of way. So, uh, we say public right of way, that's exactly what it means, so it can always be challenged. It had never been challenged before. It has now been challenged Miami Beach or Coral Gables, but I just wanted to make it that clear that, uh...
Okay.
That if we limit the, uh, area, uh, it could be challenged, okay?
Thank you.
Because of its designation of public right of way.
It can be challenged because of whatever.
I had, I had those two questions. I guess, uh, the funding or, or the cost of...
The cost factor is undetermined at this time.
Is undetermined. Um, I agree with the idea. I don't know if there is another, other way to enforce this with, without spending so much, but at least for us, the residents, it will give us, uh, some sort of, uh, peace of mind that says, seeing that we have something that it can be enforced.
Thank you. Next?
Joe DeFuria?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. Um, I'm glad that I didn't come first.
Name and...
Jodi Floria, 6511 Southwest 22nd Street.
Thank you.
I'm glad I didn't come first because listening to the extra comments that were coming in allowed me to raise a few more questions. First of all, I'd like to let know that the issue on 22nd Avenue is not relative to the estate property of the building. It's relative to a former business owner in the City of West Miami that relocated to Miami-Dade Out parcel across the street on 22nd Avenue that...
62nd, uh... 22nd Street.
22nd Street and 67th Avenue. He built a brand-new, uh, building, Empire Electric. And you know as well as I do, being an architect, that you can tell Miami-Dade, "Hey, here's my parking and it's all done based on calculations," but he listed, he doesn't list it as a fleet parking. They assume that it's for his employees, but meanwhile, his trucks are parked there and he sends these guys to park in our yards, which was readdressed with Mr. Penna and Ms. Aguilar, and the quote was, "They are for residential residual use and city use only." So this person, this business owner, isn't even part of our city anymore and he's creating this havoc. Now we have to sit here and, "Oh, my gardener can't garden because someone's car's parked in there." So all of us on, on our street have now put yellow tapes so our house looks like a crime scene. And this is what we're forced to live with? This is unacceptable. Now we get the suggestion that we have to buy decals. I pay my taxes. Why do I have to suffer for someone who is a businessperson of low character and knew darn well what he was doing, create this monstrosity that we have on our street? That's unacceptable. Okay? Let alone, "Oh, well, we'll expand it to three blocks." With all respect to the police department, they got two or three poor people patrolling around, speeders, braking, et cetera. They didn't even catch the residual traffic off Coral Way at 5:00 that runs down our street. How are they going to patrol three blocks beyond in sight people for illegal parking? That's crazy. They're not staff for that. You know? It's, it's just accumulation of, accumulation of things. This gentleman knew exactly what he was doing and for him to just send people to, and he did it in the past when he was on 10th Street, residents had to leave. He sent over to, he has his building now, I think he leases it. He still owns all those little buildings, but he leased it to the car lot next door. So they're using his storage. Why doesn't he park his employees there and have a shuttle and bring them back? Or speak to Winn-Dixie and park them over there? There's an empty lot behind his place. Why doesn't he inquire about that? But when we go over there, uh, and I think someone from the city may have gone over there and approached him, "Well, give us 30 days, we're working on it." Or, "Guy, you didn't fix it on 10th Street, you waited for it to resolve itself, which never resolved itself," but he's looking only at one thing, his pocket. But we're suffering. And he is suffering because every morning at 6:30, I got to go and extend my yellow tape. I got to put milk crates in our, our thing. "Hey, guy, you can't park there." But yet it's supposed to be residual traffic, residual use for our house and for the city and it's being used as a commercial parking lot. If he wants, I'll asphalt it and rent it to him for 400 bucks a month. We don't have to worry about the decals. But this whole issue, and I may not be familiar with what's going on on A Street and the other buffers, but I think the majority of this meeting was tabled today based on my countless emails to Ms. Aguilar. Based on that and this gentleman's employee's parking, throwing trash and et cetera. So, you know, I think I made my points and I think I've added a lot of questions, you know, still the fees are still there, you know, we pay taxes. Why do we have to go and suffer because of a businessman that's not even part of our community? He's now in Miami-Dade County, sending his people out. I think that's pretty much about it and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Tania Rosio? Tania Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. I know I've said it again and again and you're tired of it, but I'm here representing the forgotten corner. One thing that I would like to advise you and bring some knowledge to the table, we're concerned about that area that is not even ours, that belongs to the City of West Miami. Does the City of West Miami come out, water it, fertilize it, take care of it? No, we do because we care about our homes and where we live in the City of West Miami. There's no other city in this state, and I'm going overboard on this, that meets West Miami. I've said it time and time again. I've lived here for 49 years. There's got to be a reason for it. I'll be damned if I have to pay on top of that to put a sign protecting that piece of grass that is yours, but yet we take care of it. So if something is not solved without putting an economical burden on us, it's unacceptable. Why should we have to pay for something like that where we're taking care of your property? And this thing about coming out and voting, do you honestly, can you honestly tell me, someone who lives close to your homes, that you are further into the city, cares if we put these things up? They don't care. They're not affected. Of course not. Our caller is, and like Joe said, this is all a part of this man's greed. He will not accommodate his employees to park on the other side of 67th Avenue where it's affecting us. And if you go and you drive down that way and you see all those tapes and those milk crates, you think that you were living in another city within Dade County, let me tell you. And we, for two and a half years, we had to accommodate ourselves and overlook the fact that the construction people from this big beautiful building that we have down the street, they parked there. I had men undressing after work and changing clothes there. After they ate, they had their lunch, they would end their shift and go home. They had bags of trash and food and everything. We put up with it for two and a half years. Glorious, that's over with. Now what happens? We get these characters, do the same thing. And again, it's not acceptable that we have to put money out of our pockets to protect the City of West Miami's property. It's your land, it's your grass, it's your space, but we take care of it. We take pride in our homes. Thank you for here listening to me.
Thank you. Next?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question and this is something for, I guess, the city attorney or the chief. Right now, if we wanted to enforce any parking regulations as a result of what is occurring in, in that section of the city, are there any tools in place? Do we have any, any ordinances? Anything that we can do to assist with enforcement action to get these people to park elsewhere?
There has to be the ordinance and there has to be signage. And then the police officers can piggyback off the county ordinance concerning restricted or prohibited parking, but they have to be properly signed and the ordinance in place to authorize us to do that. Whether it's a fee or not a fee, there has to be the ordinance and the signage.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You, you said there's, uh, nobody else for, for the public hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Well, you need to sign and then come up, uh...
You sign it and we'll call you up.
Yeah.
Do it now.
Good evening. I'm Jorge Vasquez, 6507 Southwest 23rd Street. One issue I would like to come, uh, bring to the table is, uh, I mean, the 23rd, uh, the commute hour, 4 to 6. We have seen an increase, uh, cars going to 23rd, even in 22nd Street, people cutting off from Coral Way. And, uh, Penna here, do a favor to the residents there to, uh, slow down and put up a stop sign there, which have been, uh, a few times, uh, let the police department know about the issue of the people running the stop sign because, you know, once they put up a decoy car there, a few days worked, but all of a sudden, they, they, they knew the, you know, there's no cops in the, in the car. And, uh, it's been an increased traffic. I don't know, it's, uh, loud traffic from the, those lights they're putting in front of Grayman and, and the BGA's they have done on Coral Way. It's backing up all the traffic. It's a lot of, lot of cars coming through the city.
It's nothing even...
The afternoon, even in the morning, too. I've seen people going to work to Coral Gable, which have come through 67, come out from 22nd and 23rd Street. I would like to see if you guys put up some signs like they have in South Miami, they have some, some other cities, because at certain times you get, you know, right turns, only residents only. Would I, if that will be possible? Thank you.
Okay.
Antonio Yanis?
Hi, my name is Antonio Yanis. I live at 6546 Southwest 22nd Street. I got here a little late, um, but I've heard some of the presentations. A lot of that is, what's going on has been brought not only by me calling the city. I have spoken with Mr. Penna on numerous occasions about what was going on. The building, when it was being built, I lived right in front of it. I had two little girls. It was incredible for my daughters to come to us one day and tell us, "Why are there naked people in front of our house?" Now I have strangers who I thought I got rid of them because we got rid of the demographic that was living where the building was, which cleaned it up and cleaned up a lot of the walking ra, riffraff that was going through there. Now all of a sudden, I've got, I don't know who, walking through there and parking cars in front of my house again. Where the developer, because of all the trucks and everything that went by through the construction, destroyed all the swales on the grass, they replanted nice new sod everywhere. It's looking pretty good. It's starting to die again. Again, you know, why do we have to incur, why do we have to have the burden? He's not even part of it. You know, I have also gotten and asked the police chief on occasion. I'm seeing it more and more in, in cities, speed humps. I can tell you that from 65th to 67th Avenue, people are trying to see how fast they can go to 0 to 60. More than once, it got to the point that I would call, and you can probably find it in the tapes, that I would call the police department and I would tell them, "Yeah, hi, this is Antonio Yanis, the racetrack's open. You want to have somebody come out here?" Because we literally would have two cars coming down the street the same way, racing each other at times. And you, you know, I begged and pleaded, "Can we get the speed humps?" So that people going through all of a sudden have to go, "Hey, I have to stop. I have to slow down." We have kids in that neighborhood now. It's not like before it was just old people that never went out of their house. There are kids living in there. I have two. Joe has two.
I've got, I've got, I've got grandkids.
You know? Families moved back in there.
No comments, please, please. Let's keep the, the record straight. Okay?
You know, we have kids that moved into this area. We have families with kids that moved into that area.
Can, Mr. Yanis, can, can we stick to the subject? And unfortunately, this is a public hearing. I, I know we can address all the complaints later or...
Yeah.
And, and they're valid, please, don't, don't misunderstand me. But we, we're talking about the parking issue and why do we stick to the parking issue? So what, what will be your suggestion? I, I want to hear from you, that's, that's why we're here.
My suggestion would be, why, why does he have to come in and pull on us? Okay, if you want to give the city, the residents, a decal for their, for their car, give it to us, but don't make us pay for it. Okay?
Okay.
You know, we have family that comes to visit us. We have limited parking spaces in front of our house. We're not supposed to park on our grass, as I was told by public works. But if need be that I have to bring people to my house and I can't park because, you know, Empire Electric got their entire staff of people parked in the area, where am I going to park them? You know? If you want to give us a little decal, give it to us. Resident of West Miami, it's all it's got to say, "We just put it on the car." Well, it's real simple. You can go right to our tag and you should be able to tell by our address. When they pull it up, when the police pull it up, he's a resident. They're not residents. If it's on a weekend, hey, they're probably visiting. You have to understand that.
But we need to be able to enforce this so that...
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elliot Aspel.
And I did sign, and I had no intention to speak until I listened, unfortunately.
Two minutes.
Yes, I will. Elliot Aspel, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. It's apparent to me, it should be apparent to all of you, wasn't apparent to me till tonight, there is a problem. We pride, you pride, the residents and quality of life in the city of West Miami. If we're a city, and this is my point, this is something that needs to be done. You've heard from your police chief, it may not totally correct the problem. People violate laws, but in order for you to be active, you need to take this step. Otherwise, you cannot do anything. But to ask the particular residents that are involved today to foot the bill is totally wrong. She is saying the people that live seven blocks in are not concerned and would never vote for it. Unfortunately, she's right. That's human nature. But you cannot accept that philosophy. Or you can, but you would be dead wrong. This is a city. We're talking about Paris. Are only the restaurant owners that were attacked, are they the only ones that are concerned?
Parking, parking.
I understand. I'm saying this is a city. This commission and every resident, whether they want to be or not, fiscal responsibility. You and I and she know that at the end of each year, you are called upon to look at the budget, and you have the capability of transferring funds from one situation to another situation. You also have emergency funds for unforeseen situations. Let's throw this into the unforeseen area, although it really isn't, if I'm hearing two and a half years with this and that and so on. Okay? This is not unforeseen. It's been unattended. And yes, you know me, I'm a fiscal hawk, okay? This could come out of the city's budget, and the next time around, include it in your thinking and spread the expense or accrue the expense or whatever the case may be. The fact that any individual who is presently affected is solely going to be responsible for the cost of this means this is a segregated partitioned city. And then you're involved in being in favor of a special interest group for these three blocks and a special interest group for those ten blocks. I urge you not to pass. I passed the ordinance, not with a vote. Pass an ordinance, do the three blocks in, do not make these people pay for it.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing?
While we're on the subject about...
Let me...
Tonya Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street.
Thank you.
While we're on that, on the issue, when you talk about the signs, okay, these signs, and this is a legal question, if you post them, they have to have an ordinance, an ordinance number to be effective. Okay, then why is it that in this brand-new building, they have signs out on the street parking, which they told us that their residents and their, we're not going to have to use the street, because the building has more than enough parking spaces where they can park inside, okay? They have signs that says the parking spaces around 22nd Street are for residents of Sol Estee, of the building. Yet, they don't have an ordinance number or anything of the sort. How effective is it? Like, let's say I have a visitor. I'm going to have a party on Friday in my house, and I'm not going to have enough spaces to park. Why can't they go over there and park over there? Would it be against the law? There is no law on these signs.
Right. Your question?
Mr. Mayor, and I would go back to the special use permit for planned development. Was that a condition of that special use permit for planned development for the off-street parking for the building way back when, when it was approved? No?
Okay.
So if I have a party and I have my visitors there parked because there's not enough room, can their cars be legally towed away?
And that's a question for our chief, if it's within the public right-of-way.
It's on the street.
I would suggest the answer is no. That would be my simple answer.
And that the employees for this electric company, they don't park there?
Illegally.
Because the signs are there. And they sign, and they park in front of our homes.
Good question. Mr. Attorney?
Well, if there's no ordinance, not a part of the special use permit, they should not have it over there, period. We have, we need to send the court enforcement office over there and inquire why they have those signs.
Okay.
So that's the first time that I heard about it.
Well, I was going to take a picture today and bring it in so you could see it.
No, I believe what you're saying.
But the sign, and I went, and it says that only the residents of that building are to park there.
Well, okay. We'll send the chief and we'll send the court enforcement and find out why and who authorized them to do it.
Tonya, we have the chief there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one point, there's no enforcement that the police department can do based on those signs that are there. Again, we have to find out why and what, but as far as, we can't write a parking ticket for someone for parking there. That's not a resident. Anybody else for the public hearing, before we close the public hearing?
I will sign my paper now. Oscar Palomino, I live in 64...
Would you bring out the mic to you, please?
Oscar Palomino, I live in 6471 Southwest 22nd Street, two blocks and a half from 67. So my point is, we should not be paying for those signs, the residents. And that's what I want to make clear here. This is a problem that was brought to us from a business or from something else, or the residents should not be paying for this. This should become out of the budget of the city. If we get money for people parking in our city, it should be paid like that. But we should not be paying the residents for these signs. I agree that we need an ordinance to put some common sense, to put some law. I agree with the ordinance. That's what we should be doing in order for then the police to be able to enforce something. Right now, we don't have anything. I understand that. So we should put the ordinance, but now the residents should not be paying for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, let me, do you want to talk? I was about to close the public hearing. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Close.
Okay. We close the public hearing, back to the table. Vice Mayor?
Yes, to all the residents that are here with the issue of the parking. I understand your frustrations, and, you know, this has been an ongoing issue. We had this problem on the east side of West Miami, and, you know, a few months ago, we tried to establish, you know, something to get moving and apply this ordinance. But the business closed, so the issue sort of went away. But I knew it was going to persist, because, you know, our demographics are changing and our commercial area is changing. So that's why I said that I'm glad that it's being revisited. What we try to do here, and I tell you, I can speak for everyone sitting here at this table, we're all about quality of life. We live in the city of West Miami, because our quality of life is better, I would say, than just about any other city in Dade County. So I've been living here for almost thirty years, and I'm not going anywhere. One thing that I do is I look at the city of Coral Gables, and I see what they do to improve the quality of life of their residents. And, you know, everybody complains about the city of Coral Gables, about their court enforcement, they hate it, they think they're Nazis. You know what? But everybody wants to live in the city of Coral Gables. And we try to take things from the city of Coral Gables and bring them here. For instance, the color code or the color palette of the, you know, of the colors that you can paint your homes, you know, that was adopted from the city of Coral Gables. So the parking ordinance that we are trying to mirror from the city of Coral Gables is something that they've done that has worked for them, and it works great. Because they have, along Le June, along A Street, along all the perimeters, that they have some commercial areas, you don't have anybody parking in their residential areas. And these are very nice signs located strategically, you know, so the, you know, the possible people that would go and frequent these businesses will see them and not park there. So, you know, it is our way, and I think is the only way, to resolve this issue. And once we establish this ordinance, I think, and we adopt it and we establish it, I think your quality of life is going to improve greatly, just like the city of Coral Gables residents. As far as paying, I heard a couple of times that residents should not pay. Well, guess what? We pay for everything. You pay for everything. I pay for everything. I'm a resident here, and everything that happens here in this city, we pay. So you know what? The budget is composed of what you pay and what I pay. And we all live, everyone sitting at this table lives here in the city of West Miami, so we all pay. So I think that if we establish this ordinance and we divide the cost of implementing this signage, it's going to be, it's not going to be very much, especially if we divide it among all the residents. You know, you might be looking at twenty-five dollars a year, you know, or something like that. So...
Per car, per visitor. We shouldn't have to pay a dime, not even a penny, for someone that...
Wait, 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 wait. No, no, we close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Well, like I said, we're trying to do, we're trying to help you. We're trying to make your quality of life better.
That's not helping.
Yes, it is. We're trying to pass an ordinance.
No, no, listen, no, I'm...
We're trying to pass an ordinance that's going to help. You even said it, I'm not sure what your name is, but you alluded to it.
Vice Mayor, Vice...
What else can we do?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, just to stay your opinion, let's not be direct, the public hearing is closed.
What I want to show you is that we're doing our best to improve your quality of life. Now, the payment part of it, now that's another story. That's, you know, but alluding to what you said, we all pay. Everybody pays.
Can I, okay, can you?
I'm done.
No, 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 but can you clarify the payment? Because when you say we all pay, we're talking about...
We all pay. We're all residents here. This city runs, nothing that this city does, okay, does not do with us pain.
It's a special thing.
So are you...
I alluded to, I alluded...
Guys, I said no conversation, no dialogue, I mean...
If we distribute, if we distribute the cost of establishment, the implementation of this ordinance, citywide, maybe, maybe it will be twenty-five...
Don't put a number, because you don't know.
Thirty, you know what? Citywide, citywide, what's twenty-five bucks, thirty bucks a year? What's that? Among everybody.
Vice Mayor, very simple, very simple question. Wait, wait, are you, okay, very simple. Are you suggesting for the individual residents on that area to pay?
Each resident of the city of West Miami, not just them, I'm saying citywide. Citywide.
Okay, so you're talking about tax money?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I just want to clarify that. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Vice, no, I have the attorney looking at me. Are we out of order here?
No, you're not out of order. I mean, I'd like for you to understand that you have a budget that was approved, that I don't know the cost, and I was just asking the city manager whether or not she could tell me whether she would, could take money out of the budget, and she tells me that that would trigger a budget amendment.
Okay. We're not there yet. We're not here yet. We only have the vice mayor spoken. We need to hear from the rest. You haven't heard from me. You haven't heard from the rest of the commission. Once we hear, you know, we'll cross that bridge. Let's take it one at a time.
Mr. Mayor, you asked me to respond.
No, no, no. If we're out of order, if we're doing something, you know, just jump in, okay? But also, let's keep in mind that we have discussed one item in the agenda, and it's nine oh five, okay? And we've been here since five thirty. So I just want to make sure that we, with a clear mind, look at the rest of the items and so on, and make the right decision. So just keep that in the back of your mind. Anybody else on the subject?
I have a question, and my question is, I'm not offering you a solution, I just want to see if anybody knows. I want to go back to basics, back to the beginning. I think Joe might have alluded to, and I'm asking for you to have an input, but I think you said something about someone had gone to talk to this business owner already, and he said he would take care of it, he needed thirty days. Was that someone from our city, or was it a resident?
Yes.
Yes, what? It was an employee or it was a resident? Who went to talk to the owner?
Mr. McDermott.
So Charlie did. And he said he would try to fix this problem?
That's correct.
And he said in thirty days. How long ago was that? Was it in the last thirty days, or was it like a long time ago?
We're still within two weeks of when he spoke to him.
Okay, so we have a problem, we've gone to the source, and we've asked him to remedy it. I don't know.
So we have to wait?
Well, I'm saying, because I can see this probably coming up again down the road. Years from now, we may have the same situation. But we had it on the east side, and I believe we approached the business owner to remedy the situation, and he ended up closing the business. I mean, that remedied it, but however...
But he didn't close it because we asked him to remedy the problem.
No, no, but I'm saying, we chose that approach. We went to the business owner to see if he could help fix the situation that he had created. So I just wanted to know who went to him, and, you know, maybe we should go back to civilly, trying to see if he will remedy the situation.
Let me answer some...
Can I say, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen, because if it doesn't happen with this guy, it's going to happen with someone else, and we're going to back to square one.
If the problem could come up again, I just want to talk about this situation right now.
Commissioner has the floor.
I'm not saying it won't happen again in the future, I'm just looking to resolve the situation, you know, perhaps give it a chance to resolve. That was the only question, is who went to approach this owner?
Look, I think if we would have strongly approached this a few months ago, and we would have implemented it, and we would have done all the work that we did, they wouldn't be here, because they wouldn't have that problem. That guy would not be having his employees parked there. So you know what? We need to implement this ordinance, and we need to establish it, and you know what? If it costs so much, it costs so much. But that's going to be the only way that the quality of life of these residents is going to be improved. That's it. Because if it's not this guy, it's going to be someone else.
Vice Mayor, I understand your passion, I understand, but I got to listen to everybody. Mr. Pena, yes?
Just to go back and answer some of the questions that were asked, we, if we do implement it, the three blocks is what I need in order to be able to cover what we've seen in the past that bleeds into the residential area. The fifty percent plus one rule, I'm completely against that. Empire Electric. Empire Electric built themselves a new building, they have ample parking in the back for their fleet. And the habit that he has, it's a habit, he doesn't allow his employees to take up those spaces with their personal vehicles when they remove the truck. That's just a habit. In other words, he could possibly physically put all those vehicles inside his parking lot, and he still would have parking, it's just something that he's done over the years, like I explained in the other area where he used to be at, because there is nothing that keeps anyone from parking in public right-of-way. It's not the city's problem. It's not the city's property. That's why it's called public right-of-way. From sidewalk to sidewalk, it's public right-of-way. We don't own it. They own it, actually. The day that we have to give it back, it goes back to the property owners, as we did recently on Twenty-first Street. We don't own it, it's public right-of-way. As public right-of-way, he has the right, or his employees have the right, to go there and park if we have no restrictions. Because there is nothing to keep in the law anybody from parking there. In our zoning code, we have something that keeps business vehicles in the county this too, from parking there too long of a period of time, but it's for commercial vehicles. These are private vehicles. If I go to somebody's house, I could park in there pretty long if it's public right-of-way. Nobody could tell me, they could call as many police officers as they want, nobody's going to touch that car. The signs that were put up by Wes Gable is a deterrent. They're not enforceable, as the police department will tell you, they're not enforceable because they have no statute and they have no restriction over public right-of-way. Does it work? Sure. Nobody's parking there. Not even the people coming across the street are parking there because there's a sign there that says no parking, because they don't know that it's not enforceable. Ours would be enforceable because we'll have an ordinance that says who can park there and at what times. That has a cost. Whether we want to incur it or pass it on, that's how Gables decided to do their program. We don't have to do the same program. We don't even have a cost at this point because we need to see how many signs we need, how much distance we're covering, and then we come back with...
And type of sign.
Exactly, then we can come back with a price. The other suggestion by Mr. Vasquez, the county will do that for us. On Sixty-seventh Avenue, if there's a lot of cut-to traffic that's coming in during peak hours, they'll put signs that prohibits left turns into residential neighborhoods to get around traffic lights. So all we have to do is request that from the county.
Because that's a county? Because that's a county road that they will be put on?
That is a county road.
Okay.
Correct. And what Mr. Asbod said unforeseen, unattended, not true. We've seen it for a long time. Again, it goes back to the budget. We have to be able to afford to put these signs in. It comes and goes depending on the businesses that are in the area, whether people complain or don't complain. The businesses on Fifty-seventh Avenue went out of business and they left, so the problem disappeared. But before that, I would get daily calls at my office regarding weekend events that occurred in that area. So it's all, by not doing this, it's not going to go away. We might as well have something in the books that we can enforce, whether it's on this side, that side, or whatever side. And as far as the cost, we could always see what the cost is and whether we could incur it or don't incur it. There's also a section here, Section thirteen, which talks about the fines, which we could also direct any revenues directed from those fines...
To offset the cost.
To offset the cost. It's twenty-three dollars, the county fee right now for parking, restricted parking areas, and if they pay late, it's forty-five dollars. That has a value to it. Over time, who knows, it may work.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any question? Madam Manager?
I think, Mr. Mayor, before we embark on putting signage all along the perimeter, and that would be the long-term solution, I think we may want to establish a program in and around this immediate area, which appears to be the problematic area, and start a program little by little addressing these parking situations in the residential area. And you can establish some parameters as to how far in the residential area you want to go. Aside from that, I think that I will personally visit Empire Electric tomorrow and pleasantly speak to the owner and advise him of the nightmare situation that they're causing our neighbors and really, you know, they do have the parking and they have the responsibility to house their employees and their vehicles and take care of their business within the contents of their property. Can we make them do something? The answer is no until you adopt the ordinance and until you give us some parameters to work with, at least to remedy an immediate crisis that you obviously have in this area. And now signage can be affordable and perhaps we can look at the PTP program and see if we can partially fund that of PTP and then maybe some money coming from general fund or a combination of, and we can address this immediate area. Again, I know you're going to want to see some aesthetically pleasing signs because I'm sure these residents would want to see aesthetically pleasing signs, you know, placed in front or in and around the area where their property is located. Because a non-aesthetically pleasing sign will deteriorate the quality of life to that area. So we need to treat this with kid gloves, we need to, obviously, you need to concern yourself with the immediate situation that is being brought to your attention and we have a duty to do something about it. But can I sit here today and tell you that my office is prepared to place signage all over the city? It may become a budgetary issue that we have to address next year. I say for now, let's start a pilot program, see how that works, implement an ordinance that will give the tools to the police department to be able to enforce it and let's start there at this, you know, this immediate section of town. Because that appears to be the immediate crisis or emergency, if you want to call it that.
Okay. Commissioner Suarez?
Mayor, members of the table, I think we should do what Yolanda just said now. Let her go to that Empire Business and start to study about the signage and start to think about the ordinance. One, two, and three steps. That's my recommendation. Tomorrow, you start with that and...
And take care of the immediate problem. And then we will phase it in and come back to you with time and give you a proposal that obviously you would have to entertain now through a budget amendment process or in the near future, or it may be able to wait next year because maybe other situations are not as critical as this one is now. I think you have an immediate problem and I think we have a duty to address it.
And I think a couple of signs there will be not a big issue.
Right.
I think so. I accept her recommendation, that's what I think.
Okay. We're in agreement with the recommendation from Commissioner Suarez?
One, an input on the manager's suggestion, and I'm sure we'd have to allude to perhaps the police department. I don't want to bombard this area with signs, it becomes very unsightly, so let's put the signs at the maximum legal with the part that we can, so that they're legally placed for coverage, but you know, like not one in front of every house, so it looks really ugly. You know, the maximum with the part, so that we can legally enforce it. You understand what I'm saying?
They know what to do.
Chief, can...
Less signs, more coverage.
I have a couple of questions. Okay?
I see what you're saying, Commissioner Rodriguez, and it makes sense. You'll see signs on one corner with an arrow pointing that way and saying no parking in this block. So I need to get a hold with Juan in the county and see what those restrictions, whether it's every three hundred feet or five hundred, I don't know. That answer, I don't know.
There may be some regulation.
I'm sure there is. There is some regulation.
Chief, I have a, hold on a second, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Okay. Let's say we pass the ordinance tonight, because we need to, I can't agree with the Commissioner, I mean, with Vice Mayor, I mean, we can't do nothing. I mean, we have to pass the ordinance if that's the wish of the commission. Then obviously, there's a money issue and whatever you have to study. Now, without a decal, is this enforceable? I want the chief, not Mr. Pena.
If you put a sign, if the wording on the sign says parking for residents only or something to that extent, then there has to be some kind of an identification on that car so that if a police, I don't want my officers having to run every tag and then the other side, every tag. You know, something that they can see without getting out of their car, okay, this is a resident, oh, here's a car that doesn't have, whatever that decal is going to be, something that's immediately visible to the officer so that he or she can say, this person does not have the permit.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
You're complicating this. Let's go to steps that Yolanda said and start with the first steps. If not, we are going backwards now. Let's do what Yolanda said, she's going to see the owner of the business, she's going to look about the signs. One, the public works department, they know the regulation, they know how to do it, and start to do that. That's it. And then we go, we work at that.
So...
We have to start with that.
If the elephant won by a...
No, yeah, we have to start. If we start to discuss...
Mr. Mayor?
We will be here all night and no results. Let's start to do what Yolanda said. She's starting to work tomorrow.
I think the city manager skipped step one. I think going to talk to that property owner, commercial owner is a waste of time. I think that what she should do is work on those temporary visors or...
Like the handicap type of parking things.
Yeah, the type of handicap type, you know, instead of going seeing this gentleman, you know, work on the, on those little...
Mr. Planis, I don't agree with you. She's the manager of the city. If she go to see that guy...
I'm suggesting...
This is the beginning or something.
I'm suggesting, the guy's already, look, you're suggesting that our city manager is going to go talk to a property...
That's what she said.
To a commercial property owner that is not even in our city?
But let her, let her...
Hold on, hold on.
That's ridiculous.
Listen, my experience in life in business, if you gain more with sugar than with lemon, so she can be the sugar.
Sometimes.
Okay, so Commissioner Suarez, is that a motion?
Yeah, a motion.
Okay, I need a second on the motion.
What is the motion?
Yes.
The motion is, let me, Yolanda said she's willing to go tomorrow, talk to the owner of the business, explain the problem we have with his employees, that they directly send the employees to park in our city and our residents have a problem with that. So we are going to implement signs and ordinance in a...
Pilot, pilot.
Pilot?
Yeah. And if in the future he doesn't do something, his employees will be, get fined because illegal parking. So let her talk to Planis. I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I...
I just want to present my motion.
Okay, and I want to say something. I think this is very important because, look, this is human nature, okay? If you go talk to someone and you tell them, look, you're causing a problem for us, don't do it anymore, okay?
I can't tell you that.
And you're going to rub it in his face and you're going to say, and you know what? And because of you, we're going to implement a law and they're going to give your employees... You know what he's going to do? He's going to retaliate. They're going to, you know what? They're going to do things to retaliate. And you know what? The attorney said something. The attorney said that this can be challenged.
Excuse me?
But you know what? Maybe, maybe you...
But maybe you're speculating. You're speculating, just hope.
And I might be just right.
No, hope your horses.
And I might, I might be just right. Maybe this guy gets infuriated and he says, you know what? Calls his attorney and says, look, look what these people are trying to do. And you know what? Now we got more problems. I don't think we need to go talk to this guy. I think we need to pass our ordinance, get our signs up and give...
Vice Mayor, there's a motion on the table. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's a motion on the table.
I disagree.
There's a motion on the table, he's reading it. Listen, you can disagree in the voting process. There's a motion on the table, Commissioner Suarez.
What is the motion?
Let him finish. You haven't let him finish.
I was telling you twice. She's going to talk to the owner, explain the problem that his employees are presented to our residents. That guy has, used to have the business in West Miami. Is it no, is it...
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it. Just go, say the motion.
Man, look to me, please, so you understand that my motion...
I want to vote on the, I want to vote on the ordinance and nothing else.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes. Vice Mayor, why you keep interrupting? Let him finish.
Mayor, I have to retire from the table because I don't have communication, you know.
No, 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 you don't have to retire. Listen, listen.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Suarez?
Guys, let's all get along. It's for the benefit of our residents. Let's all work together. Let's all, gentlemen, gentlemen, excuse me. We are here for our residents. Let's work together, let's all get along, let's have a group hug and let's move forward. We can do this. Let's just do it together.
I need a second.
Nicely. May I?
Yes, yes. Madam Manager.
May I, thank you. In the name of cohesiveness and getting something going for the greater good, which is what you want, to help these folks out, I think that, I'm not going to go to the business establishment and tell and accuse this owner of anything. I'm going there as a friend because obviously, we don't have the enforcement tool. I'm going to go there and tell them we have a situation...
Madam Manager, I'm sorry, you don't have to explain yourself. I'm sorry that I cut you off.
Yes, sir.
I want the motion on the table. I want to say the motion on the table, get a second and vote, okay? Listen, listen. This is what I, I'm going to suggest the motion. The motion is to pass the ordinance with the current, the way it was advertised, one block, okay? This is my suggestion, okay? No? Okay. Three blocks. But we have to amend the motion, okay? We pass the ordinance, we do a pilot program with the signage...
In that area.
Okay? And you talk to the person. That's it. That's the motion.
Clarification, pilot program in that, in the affected area.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
You're out of order. Let me tell you, you, what is it? You're out of order. Excuse me. We are here not on that motion, we're here passing an ordinance or not.
She wants to, the manager wants to speak, let us speak.
Okay, Madam Manager.
I'll give you my little opinion.
On the issue of the decal, on the issue of signage, we may make an impact by immediately placing signs or as soon as we can get them ordered for that section of town, and that may in and of itself be a deterrent for people not to park there and the decals may not be an issue.
Can I speak? No, no, you're not. I'm sorry. Madam Manager, finish, please.
So what I am proposing is that you adopt an ordinance...
I'm sorry.
That would entertain the parking restrictions pursuant to the city ordinance, whatever you label this ordinance. We start a pilot program in that area of the City of West Miami and that should deter people from parking in our public right-of-way. It has in other areas without the decals. I'm just throwing it out there so that you can have enough to work with.
I'm going to pass the decal so I can make a motion if we just continue this way. Okay. Commissioner Suarez, do you agree with that motion?
I agree with the motion in that way, but not to pay anything. Just let her do it.
I agree. Okay, keep on going. I need a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Before, okay.
Wait a minute, what is the motion?
Yolanda just said it. Yolanda just gave the motion.
This, what's on here?
No, no, what she just said.
Pass the ordinance...
What's here?
Establish, pass the ordinance and if we need to amend the ordinance to adopt a pilot program in... a pilot program in... Mr. Villalobos is advising we can't do it. The intent, the goodwill is there...
Let me put it this way, okay? You pass the ordinance, and you're going to set some signs. You always need notice in order to enforce it. If you don't have enough money to enforce it in other places, that will be another day, okay? But you cannot pass an ordinance for one particular section... Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Please. Okay? You cannot pass an ordinance for one block or two blocks or a problem in a forgotten area. You have to pass an ordinance for the entire city. Now, whether or not you can enforce it, that's another matter in another place that you don't put a sign. You need a sign, like Francis. The law requires a sign in order to, to put, to find you whenever you have a red light camera issue. They have to have a sign. In other words, pass the ordinance and put whatever signs you have at this point, and you put signs in another time. Whether or not that will be enforceable in those areas that you don't put signs, that's another issue, okay? But you need to address this issue, this ordinance that you have noticed. I'm sorry, Mr. Villalobos, but you said two different things. I'm sorry if I made it... Yeah, I got really confused, but let me, let me listen to Mr. Penas.
Mr. Mayor, we could pass the ordinance as is written, taking out Section 4, which is the 50%, taking out Section 9, which is the cost, putting in Section 23, what the county fines are right now, which is 23 and 45 after the 30 days have passed. And I have a whole 5,000 decals behind my desk for parking permits. I've already had them done for the other parking permit program that we have. They're the same thing. We issue them the same one. We don't have to buy decals. We have them. But they have to have a decal, otherwise the police department can't enforce anything that we put up. So all we have to do is delete 5, delete 9, delete 4, delete 9, put in the fees, and pass the ordinance. I already have the decals. All I'm missing is the signs.
Motion for that?
No, I, well, whatever. I can't say that. We have a motion on the table. We can't change the motion. We have to ask the person who made the motion if interested in the friendly amendment. You know, we can't, we can't go make another motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Vice Mayor Planes, motion to approve the ordinance with the amendment suggested by Mr. Penas. Commissioner Suarez had made a secondary motion that nobody has, that has not been seconded. Therefore, it might die. It might, his motion might die.
So who seconds my motion?
Because there are two motions on the table at this point.
So who seconds Commissioner Suarez's motion?
Nobody. There's no motion. My, my motion died. No motion.
There was no second.
There was no second. It was a secondary motion.
Okay. So I make a motion with what Mr. Penas said.
With the amendment suggested by Mr. Penas.
Would you repeat your, what do you want to delete, please?
Section 4, which is the 50% rule. Section 9, which is the cost to the residents, amending the heading for a three-block and putting in in Section 13, the cost of the fine, which is $23, just like the county's is, and $45 after 30 days. The parking decals I have already. But there will be no cost to the, to the decal. That's correct. And no pilot program. We're going to start with that area and see how it works, and we'll move the other way.
Okay.
But no cost.
No cost for them.
Okay. All right. So I need a second.
Let me clarify with Mr. Penas. Mr. Abila? No, I need clarification. You're taking out the cost, right?
The cost.
No cost.
No cost for them.
Okay, if there's no cost, I go for that.
Okay. So I have a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the ordinance already talks about how many tags they'll get, how many parking permits. What we'll do is we'll give them for each vehicle they own, plus two for visitors under the ordinance.
Okay.
If one day they're going to have a party, they're going to invite friends and relatives... But wait, this, this might be neat...
I'm going to have to give a ticket to somebody just in case they run a red light. Come on. But, but, let's, let's cut it.
Well, we need, I think we need to contemplate this, because let's say that one day they want to have a gathering at their house.
With all due respect, Vice Mayor, we have an entire agenda that we haven't gone through.
Okay, so you got out?
For now, yes. We'll deal with that later.
Okay.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Planes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
5-0. Item passes.
Thank you.
The amendments.
Wow. Sorry. Let's go to the next item.
Item 11B.
Well, we're going to skip 11B.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11B, so presentation of recognition to Jimba's Wiki. He was not ready to, to come before you today for his presentation, so I hereby petition to postpone this item until December the 2nd meeting. Petition to postpone the meeting.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Next item. Deferred.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
Item C, please.
Item C, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit the interlocal agreement between the city of West Miami and the state of Florida Office of the State Attorney for the 11 Judicial Circuit of Florida to reimburse the state for the cause of the state attorney prosecution of certain criminal violation of the city of West Miami municipal code, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Planes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
5-0. Item passes.
Item D, please.
Request for resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement between Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer Department and the city of West Miami, providing for sewer disposal service by Director of Public Works.
Uh...
Director of Public Works.
Do we need any...
Item D.
Is this something we do every year?
No, actually, this is a 20-year contract. Ours is going to expire with Miami Dade. This is for disposal of sewage.